I will call the meeting to order and announce that this evening's meeting is being held on Monday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is seven oh one, and we are in order. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance and follow that in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In a moment of silence, please. Thanks, everybody. I'll turn to the clerk. Has anybody signed in for any public comments?
Yes, ma'am. We have three from S and P Railway, and I apologize if I butcher your names. James Meisner, Wally.
Meesmer.
Meesmer. I apologize for that.
That's why I were.
Uh, Wally Thompson and Tom Hay.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, all three gentlemen, for joining us. I'll just make a general announcement that we'd like to limit public comments at the beginning of the meeting to three minutes a person. And if one person's speaking, feel free to not go to nine minutes. That'd be, I'm teasing yourself.
I think we're planning on combining.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you. But we'll be here for all nine if you'd like. Okay, if you could step to the podium and announce your name. And again, I know our clerk just said so, but if you could announce your name and the organization you're here with and what you'd like to speak to us this evening, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. My name is Wally Thompson. Uh, I am the town liaison with the Sykesville and Klapsico Railway, where the folks across the street with the Pullman car and the caboose. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Link, and Town Council for having us here. And by the way, I can't remember fifty, so. We are proud to say that we have been part of the community for thirty years. The Pullman got here, I believe, in nineteen ninety-five. We just had a few ideas and concerns we'd like to present to you. So in order to do that, we have our president, Jim Meesmer, who is a longtime resident of the greater Sykesville area here. And then he'll be followed up by Tom Hay, our vice president.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate you all.
Yes. My name is Jim Meesmer. I am voted into the presidency. This is the first time I've ever done anything like this. I've lived here in Sykesville for the last forty-five years. My wife has never left here. She still lives in the same house that she was born in. And I just wanted to say that we really appreciate the Town Council and for having us here. And we had a good time at the Chocolate Run. The other day, we had a hundred and twenty-nine people come through the car.
Wonderful.
That was fantastic and watching the trains run. And with that, I will leave it up to our vice president.
Thank you.
Tom Hay.
Well, Jim, I'd like to thank you and your organization for being available to the community for such a wonderful, long period of time and the resource that you provide our youngsters and all adult train enthusiasts as well and giving them the opportunity. We appreciate you as much as you do us, so thank you.
Well, if you could have seen the kids' faces when they come through the car, they just have a ball.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
If I could, I prepared some packages to hand out or even with you.
Yes, I didn't realize that she pleased with me here, so I.
She doesn't need any.
Quick chip.
Thank you.
So my name is Tom Hay. I live in Frederick, Maryland, and I've been a club member for about ten years. And I distributed a packet to you all. It includes a copy of our upcoming schedule, a business card. I don't know why we have business cards. That's why I'm giving all of you all the business cards. And also kind of a summary of what I'm going to speak about and some things that we'd like to collaborate with the town on in two thousand and twenty-five. So in two thousand and twenty-four, our operations metrics were two thousand seven hundred and ninety-two visitors, which was down twelve percent from two thousand and twenty-three. We received about sixteen hundred and fifty-six dollars in donations from our visitors. We had revenues of about four hundred and seventy-five dollars from membership dues. We were open about sixteen times in two thousand and twenty-four. And we also prepared and was awarded a grant from the National Christmas Tree Railroad Group. They used to run the train underneath the Christmas tree at the White House. But they closed up after COVID. They've got some sort of grant funding arm, and so we applied for and received a twelve, about twelve-hundred-dollar grant to restore and repaint the roof of the Pullman car.
Fantastic.
And then I've outlined some of the things that we're interested in collaborating with you all on in two thousand and twenty-five. And I'll let you all go through those items yourself, and you can discuss it when you're together as a group or just think about it. And that's all I have. If you all have any questions, I guess we could use some of those extra minutes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, I do have one question. I kind of expected you to be up, not down. The donation is going down by three percent. It's a statistical wash, but twenty-seven percent down on membership dues? Have people moving out, getting too old, not bringing in the new kids?
We, there is an aging out problem that we have. And also, we do get members that, I think in two thousand and twenty-three, we had a couple of members that paid dues, came to a couple of events, and then just stopped coming and then decided that that wasn't really what they wanted to do. So we only have about twenty-seven members right now. About twelve to fifteen are active. And so, you know, just a loss of three or four folks.
Well, my question isn't really, is there anything we can do to vitalize this? So next year, you come in and tell us how far you're up in every category.
Well, I think that our biggest strength in recruitment is our personalities. People come in and they're like, okay, we see it. We can do this with you. We don't really have any other public outreach campaign except for posting our schedules in public libraries and things like that, so.
Well, actually, to make a point with your bullet point number four about how you generate revenue and the loss of some of that.
Yes.
In the last couple of years, so that's something that can be addressed as well.
Well, yeah, so I sit on the Parks and Rec Committee that is managing the Santa visit. So what I would encourage you to do is actually to get on that agenda.
Okay.
And go talk to the Parks and Rec Commission and work with them. I know that they would be more than willing. There was no intent of any of that. I think it was maybe just a lack of knowledge.
Right.
So, you know, for that and other events, you know, the Spark might be doing, I would definitely encourage you all to.
Okay.
To coordinate with that group.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming this evening. Thanks, Councilwoman. Appreciate that. Okay, so that brings us to our consent agenda, which is our first item of business here on this agenda this evening. And that is inclusive of one item, the minutes from the February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five mayor and town council meeting, which I was absent, so I will be abstaining from any motion to or any vote on the motion to approve these minutes. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, you have that, clerk? All right, thank you. So the motion is made and seconded and all in favor of approval of the minutes from February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And I do abstain, so the minutes are adopted. That brings us to our first item of new business, which is to consider, discuss, act on the appointment of Trevor Evans, Lauren Hanrady. And this is not my new copy. Yes, it is. I do have it crossed out down below. And also, Carrie Breck. Is it Breck or Brecky?
Brecky.
Brecky. I was gonna say Brecky. Carrie Brecky, thank you for that, Carrie. And Carmen McAvoy, as well as Jamie Neath. The latter two, I'm sorry, let me start over. The Board of Election Supervisors being appointed this evening are, in this order, Trevor Evans, Lauren Hanrady, and Carmen McAvoy, with alternates being appointed Carrie Brecky and Jamie Neath. All with, I believe it is, yes, all with expiration dates on their terms of February two thousand and twenty-seven. Any questions for staff? Joe, you want to give us a little bit of background, so?
I know, again, this is just our regular process by which we, you know, appoint the election supervisors for the upcoming election. There's a two-year term, just in case there's a special election that happens in between. You know, I don't know if that's actually ever happened in Sykesville, but again, that's why the term is what it is. And yeah, so, you know, typically, I think a minimum is three supervisors that have to be on duty the entire time. So we like to appoint alternates just so we have some flexibility when people might not be able to work all day.
Thank you. And the reason why I stuttered there when I was announcing the names for the purposes of the public certification and yours at the council table is that Isaac is not available the day of our election on May sixth, so he's withdrawn his name from interest. So just make note of that for the purposes of the motion. Any questions for staff? Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Trevor Evans, Lauren Hanrady, and Carmen McAvoy to the Board of Election Supervisors for a term expiring in February two thousand and twenty-seven, with Carrie Brecky and Jamie Neath as alternates for the same term.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. The motion is made by Councilman Leo Keenan. Second made and by Councilwoman Mark Dwyer. Without a need, I assume, for any debate. I'll call for a vote. Okay, all in favor of the motion to appoint Trevor Evans, Lauren Hanrady, and Carmen McAvoy to the Board of Election Supervisors for a term expiring in February two thousand and twenty-seven, and appoint Carrie Brecky and Jamie Neath as alternates to the Board of Election Supervisors for a term also expiring in February twenty-seventh, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so those six, five people are appointed to our Board of Election Supervisors. And why don't we just take this moment now to swear those individuals in? Cool. And I have the oath here, so if you all could stand. I appreciate it. I'll stand too. Now, when I say state your name, we're all going to say your names at the same time, your individual names. So we'll begin with aye. State your name.
Aye, Trevor Evans.
Awesome. Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will bear faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will bear faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland and to support the Constitution and laws thereof.
The state of Maryland and to support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office.
Execute the office.
Of Board of Election Supervisors.
Of Board of Election Supervisors.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
All right, you all are sworn in. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I certainly don't want to, I guess, underestimate publicly any importance that it is in your jobs on the day of the election and any hours that follow perhaps into the following day. But I do appreciate your civil duties being fulfilled in this way, so thank you.
Carmen, what number is this for you? What number is this for you, Carmen?
I don't remember.
So if each of you could maybe just form a line here at the end of the table, that's fine, Carrie. They don't have to come to the center and sign, and then I'll do the same.
Do you want to wait until we do the next two motions?
Yeah, I think that's best. This way they can run if they need to, and then I'll sign after. I say Dwyer. Do I know why?
It's far away, though, because, I mean, you added an extra W in there, so is that the issue?
Yeah, I think what it is is one of my favorite professors in college was Dr. Dwyer. I don't know why. I did do it.
I have to stop myself.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Baker Miller Cooper Dyer.
I heard it. Oh. I hope that's a ringtone and not. On his radio.
He wasn't here when you asked everybody.
Exactly. I did. He wouldn't have listened anyway. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to set the pay rate of the Board of Election Supervisors at twenty dollars per hour worked on Election Day.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you.
Do we need to include the alternates for that, Joe? That motion?
It's included.
Okay.
Yeah, it's embedded in the actual Board of Election Supervisors title, yes. So thank you. So there's a motion on the table made by, I don't want to get anybody's last names wrong, like I did a moment ago. Which everybody so kindly pointed out.
That's okay, Governor, Mayor.
Very good. All right, so the motion is made by Councilman Grassley and seconded. I believe it was by Councilman Schofield. Thank you. Any need for debate? All right, all in favor of the motion to set the pay rate for the Board of Election Supervisors at twenty dollars an hour per hour on the day of the election? See, you're all ready. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. That motion unanimously is passed.
I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Kabelowski, town clerk, as Assistant Election Secretary.
Awesome.
Second.
All right, and see, if you all would just keep it the same, then I wouldn't have to repeat everybody's names for these motions, but we'll do it. Motion is made by Councilman Grassley and seconded by Councilman Mark Dyer of Sykesville, Maryland. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thanks for your help, you guys. I appreciate you. All right. That brings us to our next item, which is a presentation of the Gate House's annual report by its curator, Andrea, yeah, look, Adrian Smith. I'm so sorry, Adrian. I'm gonna stop reading and just start, like, speaking from what's in my head. Thank you.
That's all right.
Welcome.
Well, thank you for having me here. I was just here recently to give our report on Maryland two fifty and where that stood. So some of this will look familiar. We'll sort of breeze through that part. On your table, you have a front and back, back and front paper copy that has some of the statistics. We'll go over a lot of those. We have a picture on our entry slide here of the Victory Corps of Sykesville High School. So where the middle school is today, the school that served our community for a long time there in World War II. They built some Victory Vs, and we have a display about that and some other items that went with that in preparation for our two thousand and twenty-six display that'll be coming on military history that ties in with our mid-century Cold War. That kind of exhibit coming. So this year, we have a lot of different things to discuss with you. I'm mostly going to talk about the programs that we've done in previous years and what we're planning moving forward. Not so much the exhibits in the museum. We hope that you will all come visit us. Our first day for the season is this Friday. As with previous years, we're open on Tuesdays and Fridays from ten to four, and Sundays, twelve to five. There's no charge for admission, and I hope you'll come check out the new things that we have on display. All right, so on the chart on the back of yours, it may be easier to see this if you're at home. These larger ones might be a little bit easier. The font is a little small. So here you can see that our year-over-year growth has gone pretty well. We had about a twenty-six percent increase in our overall numbers this year. That's pretty good, considering at the beginning of last year, I told you I expected it to be about flat. That is what parks and recreation throughout the United States expected for after COVID, but pretty much across the board for most recreation facilities, up continues to be the trend. So I have no idea where we'll be next year, guys. In general, we like to look at where our visitors are coming from, and you'll notice on the pie chart that the blue segment is visitors that are coming from the Sykesville-Eldersburg area. So that makes up about half of our guests. The other larger sections, the red is individuals from Carroll County but not Sykesville or eldersburg. And the yellow is places mostly like Ellicott City, a bunch from Baltimore, and some other places further afield. We especially see those in our splash pad season. We get a lot of visitors coming from Baltimore County, even the tops of Howard County as far as Columbia and even sometimes further south than that. But for the most part, it is serving our local community, and those are the visitors that we most often see repeating their visits. So, over the course of the year, the trends are more or less the same. So on this one, the blue is our non-pandemic average. The red is last year's averages for, sorry, totals for each month, and the yellow is for this past year's. And you can see we have a little bit of a dip in the summertime. We had anticipated that our porch work was supposed to be taking place in the summer. That, of course, did not happen until almost the very end of this year. And so we did not run any programs in the summer except for the crafts that we do, and we didn't do any outreach related to those because we didn't know how much room we were gonna have to do them. So we anticipate that being more with that red line pattern as far as the annual trends. And as you can see, there is a lot of pattern to it, both historically and what we've seen in the last two years. So last year's programs, probably the most exciting one, was our Archaeology Fest. So we did this down in South Branch Park. I have a whole lot of pictures of this to share. You may have seen many of these on our Facebook, so the ones on this slide are from right next to the cannery facility. And so in our historical documentation, this had been a site where we had expected to find quite a lot of different artifacts. We really didn't find much there. In the hand there that you see outreach, there's a bit of a slate pencil. And you also see some post holes and things as the volunteers are digging in that field. But the only things that were really turned up there were historical floodlines. I just spoke with Kelly Pelick, the archaeologist for Howard County that was in charge of this project, and her results will be due sometime this spring, she said. So her facility was closed all through fall and winter. So our results are still pending, but she said she will have them soon in writing. And of course, that ties into some of the other projects we have going on in town, so. So these are some more artifacts, and that's my son on the left. Lots of little kids, not just my son, but I didn't want to put other people's faces in this, participated in the cleaning of artifacts. We've got in the center, the top of a jar of shaving cream that has a specific date associated with it. I believe it was eighteen thirties. So that dates that facility had previously been dated. This is for the stone house next to the skate pad. Originally, they had anticipated that site was an eighteen fifty date, but this is such a time-specific artifact that we now can drag that back a little further in history. And there are other things like that that are very specific that they found at the site as well. We will be receiving those artifacts as well, so when they get back to us, we will have them on display. So this is, I think, the most interesting of the things that was found. So you can see Kelly Pelick in the second picture there from the left with the soil up to her head next to the skate park. So she dug down really far because she kept finding interesting features over right next to the skate park. And what you can see in the furthest left picture at the top right corner of the square pit that she has there is an additional wall to another structure. So we know from earlier maps, such as the one that you see on the wall here in green, that there were at least three standing structures there in the eighteen thirties to the eighteen sixties. And so we think that that's probably the corner of one of those structures. And so when we get those results back from her, that general guideline will be on that as well. But so it's nice to have some actual physical evidence of that rather than some sort of literally sketchy drawings. We also had a homeschool train program this spring, which was a very successful program. It was entirely full. We did every half hour, we ran a different program that had to do with being able to touch a lot of our BNO-specific items. We had volunteers from the S and P Railroad. You see in the center, Tim, there is showing how train signaling worked with a lantern. And that program, despite a rainy day, was very successful. We would like to run it again, and now that we have our Rec and Parks individual, Drew, we're hoping that that will be a thing that we will revive because it was so successful. We also had Civic's Day. I was there doing things, so I didn't get to take any pictures. We're repeating that this year on your Investiture Day, so when you all are sworn in again, good luck in your elections. We will be there with ICs again, and because the audience skewed so young last year, we will be gearing some more of the activities towards that age group. And we'll be doing the same correlation to Boy Scouts, that's celebrating in the community badge with them. The month prior to the event, on Fridays, we're hosting sort of in-house badge work at the Gate House in hopes that they'll also participate in that celebration on the day itself. So that's, I guess, May nineteenth. Yes, yes, sounds right.
Was that Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts?
It's, yes, Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. I believe it's one of those ones that's a journey that goes through multiple levels.
That's great. That's great.
So Summer Crafts, again, we didn't advertise this heavily this year. Our most successful one was our Bubbles program. So we found a lot of evidence from the Sykesville Herald of bubble parties and how they were a really popular thing, especially in the nineteen twenties, getting into the Depression era. And so both on the left, you see the tent at History Day over at the Historical Society of Carroll County. And then again, during Fall Fest at the Gate House, we shared that information with the public and taught them about what bubbles were all about and why they were different then than they are today. I also have a picture on this slide of the Millard Cooper Park new bulletin board because that thing is the most important public notice that we've ever had, I think. And so we spy and make sure that it's being used all the time, but I'm really excited that that's something that we have in place, and I really feel like that's been a very important way, especially in our casual guests who aren't on our Facebook necessarily or that sort of thing, to be able to see what's going on in our parks as a visitor.
Awesome.
Remembrance Day, this is our second Remembrance Day ceremony. We'll be doing it again this year. I have just reached out to Themis to talk about the Legion's role in that, as well as some other local events. We, of course, also had a wreath placed at the memorial that is there at the American Legion flag post there by Millard Cooper Park. I believe next year, though, we will be doing it on the day, so on November eleventh here at the townhouse next year. So I'll keep you abreast of that as those plans come into order. They're just very sketched out at this point. The most important things we did research-wise this year. In two thousand and sixteen, apparently, the Historical Society of Carroll County was donated a photo or a sketch of James Sykes, our namesake of our town. This is the guy. And so it's a little tiny drawing, and we would like to have it reproduced larger. So that's something that's in my budget for next year, too, is to find an artist that can create that in a larger version for us to share because it's really exciting to be able to put a face with the name, even if he has a sort of unfortunate haircut. A little Miller's Fillmore, but you know.
Mark likes it too.
We're also asking you to save the date of September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-six, is Defender's Day. Defender's Day is a holiday for the state of Maryland. It celebrates the War of eighteen twelve, the things having to do with the Star Spangled Banner in eighteen fourteen and everything that happened at Fort McHenry. So James Sykes was a combatant in the War of eighteen twelve. He was one of the Maryland Four Hundred. And so when we move towards this date, we'll be looking at celebrating his role as a person that was fighting for our independence after seventeen seventy-six. So that's something that we're looking at tomorrow. I have a meeting with the Maryland Two Fifty Commission, of which I am part, to discuss how other groups within our county can help us bring that to light a little bit more. So that's coming forward. Go ahead. We have also been doing a lot of demographic research. So in addition to, earlier this year, I gave a presentation at the library on Immigration and Insanity and how that was misrepresented at its time and how it's looked at today. But also, more recently, I've been working with the Downtown Sykesville Connection on their Black History Initiative. And so we looked at the Sykesville censuses from nineteen hundred through nineteen fifty and the black population, which on that bar chart is the red section, to see how it changed over time. And so I knew vaguely what the answers were to those questions, but now I know numerically what those questions are. And so even though the numbers of households in the town grow substantially over that half a century, you can see that our African-American population stayed more or less the same, and quantifiably, they gained three households. That's it, when the whole neighborhood gained a hundred and thirty. So it's a big deal. On the right, you also see a pie chart that breaks that down, too. So again, I was more concerned about the general inclusivity, so not just the African-Americans, but also especially since I had just done all the research on immigrant populations, what the immigrant population was at that time. So in nineteen hundred, for the Freedom District, so there was no Sykesville in nineteen hundred quite yet. The red-orange section on the pie chart shows you that about three percent of our local population was immigrant. But what is very interesting about that is when you look at our town's very important people, almost all of them are immigrants, largely Irish and English and Scottish, and including James Sykes, who was an English immigrant himself. So I find that very interesting, that for such a small population, that we have half our town's founders who are immigrants. Construction, I'm not sure why that got messed up. Okay, anyway. It's sort of representative of what happened to the porch. So our porch had sunk on both sides. It was a water retention issue. In this picture, it looks deceptively flat. If you've been out to the Gate House, you know that it's on quite a hill there. The bigger problem was that the drainage from our downspouts had gone into the footings of the deck and had made both sides of it sink, and it also rotted out the bottoms of most of the columns. So in addition to, if you want to show the next slide, in addition to re-supporting those edges, and you can see at the. In addition to re-supporting those edges, and you can see at the bases of the columns where they replaced the boards as well, they also reconstructed the same curvature of the base that was there, so that it's entirely done in the way that it was historically, including the slats on the deck aren't just a flat slat like you do on your deck today. They're grooved so that they fit together. And then they fit into the walls of the stone or the granite in the gatehouse. So they did an excellent job. I'm really glad it's finally done. It is an old house. I mean, the gatehouse is over a hundred and twenty-five years old, so yeah. It's gonna need work over its, its decades, and we'll, we'll see what happens next. Hopefully, nothing too exciting. Over the winter closure, we've updated or completely redone almost every exhibit in the museum. So we change things up quarterly typically. But even the repeated exhibits, we've done a lot of research and professional development this year over modern ways to interpret, especially our touchable artifacts. So our signage is getting to be fewer and fewer words and more and more, what can we make it so that you can actually touch it? What can we take out of the boxes? What can we find reproductions of so that you can really interact with this history? We also have our nineteen fifties pop culture exhibit this year, so there's lots of music and clothes and things like that. We have quite a bit of things from the Sykesville High School as well because they played such a role in our communities, everything at the time. We did a lot of filing and organization, especially for the Downtown Sykesville Connection, as well as the Historical District, working on getting their files in order and adding to their photo collection. On our website, which still needs a ton of work, we have tried to add some of our early efforts moving up Main Street in the organizational process that we've done with that to get those online as well. And we'll be working on that. Probably every month or two, we'll be able to add a new record of another property and its occupants as far as we know them. And we'll, of course, be updating those as we find out more information. We've done a lot of event planning, especially with the Historical Society of Carroll County. We're just trying to really make sure that, you know, our community historically has been pretty excluded from a lot of county-wide events. We want Sykesville represented. We're also working on a lot of collaboration, as I said, mostly with in-town exhibits and, and entities, not exhibits. And of course, are very excited about Drew's role in Wreckin Parks as our new collaborator. We also deep cleaned a lot of things. There's a lot of dusty old stuff in the museum, especially after construction shook everything out. We're still preparing for Maryland two fifty. Again, I have a meeting tomorrow, so I will know better what to update you on on that. There is that meeting coming up that I highly recommend that you attend if you are available Wednesday, March twelfth, from two to three thirty PM. I know it's a terrible time, but it will also be recorded and broadcast online as well. It is a community forum. It is not specific to Sykesville, but it is intended that the community here participate in it. But I will be there to share what's going on, and the leadership, especially Laura Bankert, will be there and other individuals from the Historical Society to tell you on a broader scale what's going on. Yes.
Your glossy says March eleventh, which is a Tuesday. Did you change it to Wednesday?
Yeah, I think it's Wednesday, March twelfth. I will double-check that and say with you, yeah.
Can you just send an email to the whole council?
Sure.
I'd like to attend. If it's on Wednesday, I could do it, but on Tuesday, I have something already.
I'm not sure. Clearly not. I just got back from Puerto Rico. I'm doing my best. Okay, so yes, so tomorrow we have a meeting for Maryland two fifty. I will figure that out, and I will send you an email.
It's March twelfth.
Yes, twelfth, okay, good. Got it right on this.
If you could still send an email, that'd be.
Sure.
As a reminder. Whenever you send it, I'll put it in the calendar, Joe, so I'll know it. I'll know it.
For twenty twenty-five, our planned events and participation, we're still putting a couple things into works, but just at a glance, this Saturday is the National History Day for county. I am, I was asked to be a judge this year, so I'll be there all day. On Saturday at Winters Mill High School, it runs from nine to one. One o'clock is the award ceremony, I believe, or twelve thirty, I think, is when that starts. There's a CCPS teacher in service that one of the sites they'll be visiting is the gatehouse, another is the colored schoolhouse. On that day, we'll mostly be sharing primary resources and how they might want to use those in the classroom. We'll see what this crop has to do with. It's always a different group, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, so we're never quite sure what we're gonna get till they show up. But we're glad to be part of that. Civics Day, as I said, Monday, May nineteenth is coming up. It should be similar to last year with a few tweaks. We will be doing tours of the farmer's market from the back of town. The front side of town is too loud and too narrow to take tour groups down, but we will be at the market at ten o'clock through eleven o'clock. We'll do quick tours, looking at things like the Pullman Car, talking about our historically black neighborhood, and talking about the backs of buildings and how you can see how those buildings have changed over time. We'll be doing that the first two weeks of the farmer's market, and depending on how that is received, we may continue doing it longer, but we'll see how it goes. This is a new one for us. Christmas in July, so December, as you saw in our graphs before, tends to be a fairly low visitor rate for us, so we are gonna try doing a month-long celebration of Christmas, both our nineteen fifties Christmas things that go with our ongoing exhibits, as well as our nineteen hundred turn of the century, how Christmas was done then. So something a little different this year. In the event that it is still funded, I will be attending the American Associate of State and Local History Conference this fall. There's some question of that. We are also working with the Historical Society, as well as other museums like the Farm Museum, to put together a Touch Tank History homeschool event. And so that will be where, just like in our museum, we have lots of touchable artifacts, things kids can walk up too quickly and get a one-sentence takeaway of what these historical artifacts are, what they have to do with history, and we're hoping to reciprocate that to take some of our artifacts to their sites and do kind of the same thing. We'll be open at Fall Fest again. That is our highest attendance day of the year. Oh, my gosh. Very crazy in Millard Cooper Park if you've never been up on the day. Anyway, and of course, Remembrance Day we'll be moving forward with again. So again, there are a few other things, especially this fall, that we have in the wings, but these are the ones we're ready to announce.
So a question in reference to the conference, if we could go back to that slide. So it's not about a funding issue, about the town?
No.
No. So what is the funding issue about? Could you be more specific?
So the American Association for State and Local History is heavily funded by the federal government.
Which, which, uh, agency, do you know?
I'm not sure, no. I don't know. But we received three emails so far about how it may, may, may or may not happen, so.
Is that due to like grants not being available? Is that the issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. It's just good to know what the downstream impacts of these things are in our society and our communities. It's interesting to see that, you know, even comes to a historical conference where people learn about the, the great wonderments of what's happening, you know, in their own society. It's very interesting.
Right. Thank you.
On this slide as well, so I saw a lot of homeschool events. Are you also connecting with the local?
We reach out every year to the school system. We're, we are an approved volunteer facility, so the kids can come and get hours with us. We, right now, we have one student who's there. She wasn't here over our winter recess, but she'll be back next week when we're open. Students can come do research with us. They can come volunteer to help us process things. They can do all kinds of different things like that. We also occasionally get requests to go into the school system and bring some of our touchable artifacts.
That was my question.
We've done that a few times. We haven't seen as much of that lately. A lot of changes have occurred in the classrooms as far as the way that social studies teachers are allowed to do these kinds of things. So we just haven't seen a huge number of requests, but we make sure that we send out the information quarterly to the schools.
Okay, thank you.
Have you reached out to any homeschool Facebook pages locally to make that, make yourself available?
I don't handle the outreach for the homeschools. My assistant, Colleen, who did she's who does the bulk of the homeschool outreach. I just helped put them together in the end. But, um, yes, I, I know that in our community, it's a huge, huge popul- as I said, our train program in itself was a ridiculous number of students, so.
And then do you have, is there any correlation between donations and attendance? You said the Fall Fest is really big, or is it kinda?
One of the things we've looked into in the past, I've talked to Joe about this before, a lot of smaller institutions make use of something called a dip jar, which essentially allows you to give a museum donation that's a suggested donation with a tap card function. And so we looked into that a while ago. We haven't looked into it in like a year or two.
It's been a little while. We've been trying to get credit card use just at the townhouse.
Right.
Recently, so it's like, that's gonna be something that, yeah, piggybacks on that.
The fees are pretty ridiculous.
But that's what we find is that a lot of our visitors say we would give a donation, but we don't have cash on us. We do receive donations and we can through our website as well as through the town itself. And we do, we do get donations that way.
What about the, like Zelle or the different cash apps?
Venmo.
Venmo, yeah. I mean, could we set something like that up?
We could. It's just a matter of tying it to an account.
Right. Yep.
That doesn't come with the, uh, the
Fee.
Service fee, the charge, the fee to the receiver, the recipient. So that would be good.
You have to make sure that Venmo would allow it to a government agency.
Government agency, yeah. There'd be special rules, I'm sure. Yeah.
I bet you if it were taxes, it'd be Ven- Venmo would be acceptable. Yeah. You know, pay your taxes to the IRS with Venmo. Let's set that up.
Good, we'll get right on that.
Any other questions on this slide? So that's it. So if you have any other questions, you can reach out to me or Colleen, and we would be happy to go through any of these things. There's some information on your handout about some of our specific goals for this year, as well as some more specific information about the Maryland two fifty and the changes going on there as well. But just as an overview of the museum itself, that's pretty much what we have going on. Any questions?
Well, that is a robust annual report. And a, 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 a report can only be as robust as the actual things it's reporting, so I appreciate all your hard work here and Colleen both. Thank you, Adrian.
Well, thank you for your ongoing support. It means a lot to be able to put the time in, and especially since switching to full-time, I really look forward to upping the ante this year.
I have a quick question.
Oh, yeah.
So with your attendance, do you find that more attendance is surrounded by an event? Like activity versus people just wanting to come in and look?
Right. So most of our visitors to the museum itself are for just their wandering in, say, we're in the park or using the splash pads, but our direct attendance, that are people intentionally coming to the museum, almost all of it is from events. Like when we host homeschool events, when we do things that are specific to a talk or a presentation, that's where we see most of our visitors.
And Adrian, as you work your way up Main Street with the historic, the history of each, each building, do you plan on going all the way up Spott Hill Road?
So we're gonna be doing Main Street. Main Street is first, and then we're gonna be doing Springfield second.
That would make sense.
Yeah, and then we'll work from there. But it's, it depends how many visitors we get, because as I said, especially this year, we were so busy. I mean, there were days we don't sit down because there's visitors every moment.
I've heard there was an orchard on First Avenue.
An orchard on First Avenue? Really? Wonder where that was.
We're working on it.
Thank you again.
All right, thank you so much.
All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to our, I guess that's Roman numeral six, consideration and discussion and acting on the proclamation for Black History Month. I'd actually like to take the opportunity to read it aloud. Whereas each year, Black History Month is observed nationally in February, and whereas the origins of Black History Month date back to nineteen fifteen, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson founded the organization now known as the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, and whereas Black History Month was formally adopted in nineteen seventy-six to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout the American experience, and whereas observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas Black History Month also celebrates the achievements and contributions that Black Americans have made in shaping our country, our society, and our community, and whereas every year, the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History sets a theme for Black History Month and has established twenty twenty-five's theme as African-Americans and Labor, which touches on the invaluable contributions of Black Americans in the workforce. A story that begins with enslaved Africans brought to colonial America who would become the keystone of labor in the newly formed United States. Beginning in the late eighteen twenties, the longest and most ambitious railroads in the nation were built in the South, nearly entirely by railroad company-owned slaves. By eighteen fifty, most US slaves, enslaved persons, were third, fourth, and even fifth-generation Americans who had long since become the bedrock of the agricultural South. And then by eighteen sixty, had completed the South Railroad Network, one of the most extensive in the world and a gift to the whole of the US economy. And whereas Black Americans locally have and continue to make substantial contributions to industries of all kinds in our region and beyond. And whereas the town of Sykesville is proud to honor the history and contributions of Black Americans in our community throughout our region, and this evening reaffirm our unwavering commitment to identifying and eliminating barriers that have dissuaded the full participation of our Black community members. Together, we strive to build a brighter future, fostering safety, trust, and a sense of belonging for every member of our community. And now, therefore be it proclaimed, that the mayor and town council of Sykesville hereby proclaim the month of February twenty twenty-five as Black History Month with the theme African-Americans and Labor. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the official seal of Sykesville to be affixed this twenty-fourth day of February in the year twenty twenty-five. So we'll need a motion to adopt the proclamation.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. All in favor of adoption of the Black History Month proclamation, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that brings us to a unanimous adoption of Sykesville's first Black History Month proclamation. I believe we had a unanimous one there. Well, you can only abstain, sir, with a, with an explanation line.
Uh, well, I was gonna, I was waiting for a conversation.
Well, I never offer an abstention because it's usually done before I call.
So I'm kind of opposed to this. I think, you know, one of the big things we have in Sykesville is inclusion, and by by calling out a certain group through these proclamations, it doesn't make us feel all included.
Well, I'm sorry that you feel that way. So I'll recall that the vote is a six to one vote in adoption of the Black History Month proclamation. And then I'll do that again. Thank you. Right, that brings us to the first and I believe only item of unfinished business. That is item number seven on the agenda, which is the Public Hearing and Consider, Discuss, Act on Ordinance Number twenty twenty-five dash zero one, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Budget Revision. Number one, I'm sure of a few that may come around after this evening. Don't know. All right. Well, as we progress through the fiscal year, several budget categories need to be adjusted to properly account for current and expected revenues and expenses for the remainder of the fiscal year. This document includes an increase in revenues and expenditures of four hundred eighty-eight thousand five dollars. And I'll turn this over to staff for further explanation.
Thank you, Mayor. So again, just a review of what went over last time. Again, it's a, a increase in revenues and expenses of four hundred eighty-eight thousand, a little over four hundred eighty-eight thousand. Majority of that was due to capital projects that we've either tackled or have included in the budget, the most notable being the Sykesville Station Project. So again, we're just basically adding money to the budget to recognize that project as it moves forward. Another project is the, the gatehouse front porch, which you even mentioned earlier. Again, it's just, you know, showing that in the budget, even though that work has already been completed. Outside of that, there's a, a, a couple of minor ones. We increased the amount of interest that we're collecting this year. Again, this is just because our investments in CDs and, and savings accounts are, are performing quite well. So we're able to increase that revenue category quite a bit, and then also capturing, I guess, the full fiscal year from when we put the budget together on income tax to, so that we can accurately project what that three-year rolling average was. So again, both of those categories went up, so again, we're just showing those, showing those line items. The only change between introduction and this meeting actually had nothing to do with the, or change in the ordinance itself. Just in the detail, we did tweak the Streets and Roads section to actually decrease contracted services and increase the sign line item. It's just some sign work that we're doing, namely over where we took the landscaping out for around one of the signs that, as you enter Hawk Ridge, had to be replaced, so we had to pay for that. And then to get it to match the other sign right across the street from it, you know, again, we had to get that one painted. So again, that, that, that was a little bit of an expense. Plus, one of the park projects that we're doing, because we don't have a specific line item for signs in parks, we just go ahead and put it in this one. A lot of the rural signs in parks are old and, and a bit dilapidated, so we're actually gonna go around and replace those this spring. So this helps accommodate that. If there's any questions, obviously, we're here If there's, uh, any questions, obviously, we're here to answer them. Otherwise, we are, uh, fully recommending the adoption of the budget revision number one.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Start on my right.
Did you hear any emails from any town members about the budget revision?
I did not.
Okay. Well, we will be opening the public hearing in a moment, but I just wanted to give the public an opportunity if you guys have comments or questions that would rise to the level of informing a public hearing. Anyone else?
I ju- I just have one comment. It's not in, it's not in the staff report, but I just wanted to call it out. It is in the documentation, uh, for the budget details that the professional services is increasing by a hundred thousand dollars for legal expenses. I just want to call that out in particular, uh, due to our ongoing litigation. I mentioned it in the last conversation we had. I think the public needs to know that information.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield. Alright, um, hearing no further, uh, public comment, I should say, pub- comment from the council will, uh, move to open the open hearing if someone has a motion.
Motion. Go ahead. So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, uh, the motion is, uh, to open the public hearing made by Councilman Dyer and, uh, seconded by Councilman Grassley. Uh, all in favor of, of that motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. We are now open for public comment. Anyone? Anyone?
Motion to close the public comment.
Okay. Okay. So we'll, uh,
Symmetry there.
The motion made by Councilman Grassley and seconded by Councilman Keenan. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that forty-five second long public hearing, which I didn't call out the timing of, was exactly forty-five seconds. Thank you. Um, alright, so with the public hearing closed, we
Motion to approve ordinance number two oh two five dash oh one, FY two oh two five, budget revision.
Thank you, Councilman Grassley with a second. Councilman Schofield with a second. Any need for further debate, or any debate, I should say? The motion now on the table. Okay, I will call for a vote. Uh, all in favor of, uh, adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one as presented, uh, budget re- revision as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, unanimously adopted ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one.
Big difference.
That brings us to, um, the announcements and reports for this evening. I will begin with the first two announcements. The next meeting is Monday, March ten, twenty twenty-five, and we have volunteer opportunities available as a crossing guard on the police auxiliary. And yes, our totally full commission, um, is now not full.
Somebody got balled.
I believe it lasted an entire nine and a half days. Um, our Board of Zoning Appeals now has an, uh, an, an open chair. So anyone interested in the Board of Zoning Appeals or, um, serving on the auxiliary police or as a crossing guard, which is always very much sought after and appreciated, please email town@sykesville.net for more info. That brings us to staff updates.
Could I just add something about the importance of the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes.
Uh, this is a very important board for anyone who is interested in any of the ongoing development within our community, especially for its conditional use cases. Is that right, Joe?
Yes, yes, all conditional use cases have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Right, and so that's important if a developer wants to come in and present an idea that is outside the permitted uses. And I know that might sound like a lot of government talk, but it's really important government talk in, in terms of what can be developed in our communities. And so I just want to throw it out there that this is a really, it's actually, I'm gonna say it, exciting opportunity to be able to continue to maintain the small-town charm of our community by being able to serve in this capacity. So, so whoever's listening out there, I just want to make a pitch for that because it's really super important for what we're trying to do as a community within our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield.
Is there an age limit to be part of a commission? And is there a residency restriction?
I believe she means minimum age.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, as long as it was sixteen years old.
Yeah.
I thought I was.
Is it like an eighteen or over?
I believe that's a good question.
Yeah, you know, I don't think I've ever looked at a major requirement for, for a board of commissions. So it's, I imagine it's, it's open to anybody that, uh, the ca- the council wants, uh, appoint.
Calling all sixteen-year-olds.
I just wanna get that open, that you don't have to be twenty-one or whatever, if you're
Whatever it might be.
We can, we can dig into that. I don't know if
Yeah, we should.
But, um,
Is it, is it still three people?
Or did it? Right now, it's only two.
Two, that's what I'm saying, the, the board is three.
Correct.
We didn't increase that.
So anybody who's interested.
Yep.
Well, it's a good resume builder.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Get yourself involved in the community.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, please, uh, email or call the town and, uh, with any interest in any of those positions, specifically the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, usually, we look for a resume to come along with that, uh, letter of interest. And, um, then you get to meet with the mayor. And you don't have to do any of that to meet with me if you'd like. Doesn't anything do with the commission, just come on in. Alright. Uh, thank you for that, Councilman Schofield. Uh, Joe, let me, uh, turn things over to you.
Uh, most of my update will actually be in, in closed session, but I do just want to, uh, I guess, uh, remind everybody that there's a planning and commission meeting on Monday where there will be, um, uh, some discussion about conditional uses, uh, in, uh, Warfield Development. And then, yeah, we'll just want to go from there.
Thank you.
If I may tag on the Joes real quick, uh, so election candidacy filing forms are due in exactly a month on March twenty-fourth. Um, and then the election is May sixth.
So due by that day, but any day between now and then?
Correct.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. And you said March twenty-fourth?
March twenty-fourth.
Thank you. And they would do that how?
So there's a form on the town websites. There's actually an entire election page that we will be linking on the front page here soon.
Okay.
Um, but the form is available on the website and it is pretty simple. It's your name, your contact info, and a signature saying that you want to run.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And that is a shift from prior years. It's not the first time it's different, but it's not
Correct.
It's not the, uh, i- it's new enough for me to say that, that that's a different process. And, and so you, you don't have to come to a meeting to do that.
Is there a requirement to be elected to participate?
You have to be a registered voter.
And there's a residency requirement. I believe it's thirty days for the council. You have to be a, a town resident for at least thirty days prior to the election. And I want to say it's six months for mayor, but I'll have to double-check that one for you.
Okay, so a registered voter in the town of Sykesville, and you have to be here for at least thirty days for council and six months for mayor.
As a resident, yes.
I, I always thought it was a year. Is that? Thought so too.
I thought so too.
I always thought it was a year for both.
We'll check.
We'll double-check that.
Okay, so you have to be a registered voter living in the town of Sykesville?
Yes, and, 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 um, we'll check on residency. And that'll be on the, the, uh, splash page of the, of the website. Thank you.
And then the election is May
Six.
Tuesday, May sixth.
Yeah, I just went online and it says a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sykesville three sixty.
Thanks.
Awesome.
Thanks, Councilman Keenan.
Okay, um, and that brings us to our public safety report, which is the time we get to call, uh, Chief Spaulding to the microphone.
Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, everyone. Professor Dwyer, it's nice to have you here.
How's it going?
Sorry.
It's all good. It's all good. I deserve it.
I'll just blame Mayor Clink here.
That's fun, that's fun, that's fun. I get sleep, that's fun, and Clink is better.
Alright, before I start with the public safety report, I did want to address a few questions that were emailed to me. One was about, uh, case number triple zero one twelve. Um, the question was, was it unlawful carry again, or is this the same incident? This was actually a, a new incident. Um, PFC Jacobs was actually on his way to training and made the mistake of stopping at a local store and noticed some criminal activity afoot. And through his investigation, determined that, uh, the subject was, had a loaded shotgun and a loaded pistol, a handgun in his vehicle. Uh, the handgun was also, uh, what is known as a ghost gun, not traceable by serial number. And he proceeded to, uh, place the subject under arrest and, uh, recovered the weapon. So that was a separate incident.
Did that, did that subject have a history of, uh, criminal activity, or?
I don't recall.
Had a couple things, but nothing like this.
Is that a printed gun?
Sorry.
Was that a
It was not a three-D printed gun.
Did he, what was the reason he gave for the loaded shotgun?
Uh, he claimed he was planning to go hunting, or he had been hunting and was planning to go hunting the next day.
I knew you were gonna say that.
Okay. Kind of a typical answer, especially in Carroll County.
So Palmer, he had a handgun, but it wasn't three-D printed. So you could buy the remnants and put it together.
Okay. And was that, was that, was that a Carroll County resident, or was he just passing through?
Resident.
Yeah, pretty sure it was a resident.
Okay.
He worked there.
Not, not a town resident, I don't believe, no. Just happened to stop in and crossed, crossed paths with PFC Jacobs.
He was actually an employee of the deli.
That's right.
Wow, okay.
Okay. The second one was triple zero fourteen. Uh, the question was, did someone break in? Uh, PFC Hapa, who's here actually, investigated this matter. Uh, there was no evidence of a burglar breaking and entering. Uh, the residence, which is well-known to us, um, if we've been there multiple times in the past, it was a horrible state of, of disarray. Uh, the residents were nowhere to be found. Uh, the report was called in by a neighbor, but I believe the garage door was, it was open and off its tracks, but was no evidence of, of a burglar or break-in. Anything else you want to add on? Alright, getting to the public safety report, and thank you for those two questions. Um, very short one this time, only covering the two-week period, February third to the seventeenth. As you can see, total of four hundred ninety-three, uh, events. Uh, nothing really, uh, noteworthy to, to report. There were, uh, nine incident reports during the same timeframe, which I'd be more happy to answer any questions about if you have had them.
I actually, uh, chief, did I just jump ahead of you? Were you gonna say something?
No, we're good.
Okay. Um, it's, uh, CFS twelve ninety, it's down on the, um, assisting other agencies. Um, it's number, I said twelve ninety. It is, I know of no other balmor other than New Jersey. Was this, is the owner of that, um, home, uh, on Willow Bottom, a New Jersey resident renting the home?
Help me out here. I think related to the missing person?
Yes, and it's the same address as the
Yes.
So the, the, the family member, the sister of the missing person lives in New Jersey.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And that's the owner of the home?
No, the, the grandmother apparently owns the home.
So the, the, the house is owned by a trust.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um, in the, um, and I, I, I don't know his name off the top of my head, but it, it's a, it's a trust to that person. Um, and there, we, I located an uncle, um, that is the trustee, or the person that runs the trust. And that, that trust changes every two years.
Yep.
So he can't get, uh, possession of the home.
Well, the description of the, the inside of the home is, uh, not at all what it looked like in twenty fifteen when it sold.
Sure.
Uh, it, that's really unfortunate.
And the fact that you mentioned the missing person, I will say, uh, Sarah Bell is still missing.
Okay.
Sergeant Lacy is doing the investigation. Uh, she has been seen within the past couple of weeks by other people, but not, not by us in order for us to remove her as a missing person.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank you for all of the community policing, walking up and down Main Street. I know it's cold out, so activities with the community is probably limited, but being on Main Street, visiting with the business owners and so forth, I like seeing that. Thank you. Thank you all.
They always seem to stop in the creamery.
Can't imagine why.
You know, I will, I will have to say
Popular. There's a trend there.
Can't imagine why.
This PSR was one of the few times, and maybe only because I may not be as observant as I, um, brag to be, but I don't ever remember seeing, um, feet-first on there since it exchanged hands and was no longer trisport. So, um, I think that's great. There's, uh, uh, Officer Bond stopped in.
His community policing has improved.
Yes, I've noticed.
And, uh, we're, we're glad to see that. Looking for a little bit more of a balance.
Yeah. Yeah, and I really would love to see more, more, um, more of the police officers' boots over at the middle school whenever it's possible. Yeah, please.
Sure.
Google. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, that was almost painless and fast. I guess all those questions ahead of time, this thing's working out really well. So, um, that brings us to council and commission liaison reports, uh, begin at my far left there with Councilman Dyer.
Nothing to report.
Okay, Councilman Schofield?
Joe already mentioned the, uh, planning and commission meeting that's coming up on Monday night.
Thank you.
That's gonna be, um, on YouTube and Facebook?
Yes.
Okay.
Council President, anything for us?
I don't have a committee report, but I have a question, something to bring up to staff.
Excellent.
Um, so beautification throughout the town, um, Adrian talking about, uh, South Branch Park and the Sykes House, is that what they're calling the
The Stone House?
The Stone House.
Yep.
I'm just thinking that maybe we can commission, uh, artists to paint the plywood that's up there to make it a little bit more appealing.
We did look into that, uh, that long ago, and let's just say to commission an artist to do it, it wasn't, it wasn't nothing. It cost, it cost a little extra.
What about a local high school stu- art students?
We'll, we'll take into it again and maybe bring something to council.
Yeah, especially since we're doing a whole lot of changes in that area, that it would just kind of make it pop.
Yep.
Thanks.
And, um, best ca- or, uh, that's best-case scenario. Otherwise, just we, Joe and I talked about perhaps just some lexin, some clear, very thick, um, can't be broken with stones and rocks and, uh, heavy objects to go where the glass would be without the wood being there, so that it's still sealed, but also, um, unbreakable and less likely to be
Or some type of exterior wallpaper, that it looks like a window or something.
Yeah.
Different options.
Very good. Alright, thank you.
So Thursday is, uh, the next park meeting, um, and planning for this upcoming season, so.
Excellent, thank you.
HCC meets Wednesday, uh, about, uh, hanging sign and window decals for seventy-five forty-one Main Street, which is
Pinnin' up back here.
Acupuncturist. And, uh, to get back to, uh, the Sykesville Patapsco Railroad, Joe, those guys have a good repertoire with you, right? If they need something, they usually come right up and ask for it?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
They also like to do this, though.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe you should
Usually, it's the second time Joe's heard it and the third time I've heard it by the time they share it with all of us.
Maybe, maybe in the future, you should ask him to maybe just invite him and get it on the agenda.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if that's a
Well, I think getting the three of them together at one time is also, but sure, yeah, we can maybe set it as an annual thing with them, like whatever week this was in February.
Right.
Second one in February.
So to your point, though, we talked about the steps, and I don't know if those are ever fixed.
They were.
They were, okay, great.
About just breakers too, were those?
Didn't hear about it.
The br- the bricks are shown on our list, but we were waiting on the bricks until we started our South End streetscape. So, you know, assuming that starts construction
Great.
Within the next few weeks, which that's what we're hopeful of.
Awesome.
We'll be taking care of it.
Yeah, the steps are taken care of by Christmas. They were, they held me when I went up there, so.
Okay.
No other report.
That's how you figure out the weight limit, send Grassley up there. Uh, Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, for the, uh, DSC, um, it's been an interesting two weeks. As the result of one misguided individual on Facebook, we actually got a lot of media attention. I don't know if you've seen the, uh, reports that were done on, it was, uh, WMAR and WBAL highlighting, uh, Black History Month in Sykesville, specifically the banner that is on Main Street. Um, but that's, we got a lot of media attention, and that also brought with that, um, some donations to the DSC, volunteers, um, actually really helped. Engagement on Facebook has tripled. So it's been, it's been very helpful.
Been po- positive.
Positive, very, very positive, yes.
Second.
Yep, and outside of, I think, one person, every other response was completely positive, so.
So, um, thank you, Mr. Pressman, for your comments on Facebook.
Yep. Um, Jedi Committee fundraiser last week was a great success. Uh, it was the All-Day fundraiser, um, that was sponsored by Lokomotive and the French Twist. That brought in a lot of donations and again, some more, uh, volunteers. The, um, DSC committee, uh, head, heads attended a Maryland nonprofit, Maryland Main Street Training on Funding Strategies and Operational Sustainability. Uh, there's also a commitment to adaptation and community engagement. There's also a commitment to adaptation and community engagement. We're staying in touch with and adapting and pivoting as needed to serve the businesses and community members, and we're gonna continue to modify as we can. And then looking ahead, um, DSC really appreciates all the town's support for everything we're doing and, um, enjoy our collaboration and looking forward to continuing that.
Thank you.
The signup geniuses out for volunteers for all of the events?
Yes, yep.
All of the time out.
Sign up, always need volunteers, always, always.
And if you go early, you get to pick and choose.
Yes, so jump on it.
I did.
All right, all right. I would just like to announce that I'll be attending the Maryland Mayors Association through the Maryland Municipal League. That's, um, the sixth and seventh is the meat of it, but, uh, the governor's having a welcome reception on, in the evening on the fifth. So my wife and I will be attending that. And then it's just me on the next two days, um, with all of the other mayors. And we're actually spending some time, it's in Annapolis, and we're spending some time at the State House, doing some, um, advocating for local jurisdictions with the legislatures, legislature.
When is that again?
Uh, the fifth and, uh, well, the sixth and seventh, yeah, of March.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thursday and Friday?
Yeah, Wednesday, Thursday, yeah. Mayors don't meet on Fridays.
Okay.
Yes. So I want to announce that we're having a closed session this evening. The meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section three dash three oh five B, number eight, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. And this evening, it is the pending litigation with, uh, Warfield lawsuits. And so I'll call for a five-minute recess to allow the gallery to clear and thank all those that attended the meeting this evening. Thank you, it's good to see your faces. And upon completion of our closed session, discussions will return to open session before adjournment, so. All right, we're in a five-minute, uh, recess, thank you. Eight eleven.